It's now 6:00 PM. I'd like to call to order the Regional Planning Commission Public Hearing for Thursday, February the 6th. I'm gonna start off a little bit different, the agenda. In the last month, we've lost a number of firefighters. Not only in my fire company, but other fire companies up and down in Kent County. In my fire company, we've lost Mr. Ken Ryder. In Federica Fire Company, we lost Mr. Bill Betts. In Magnolia Fire Company, we lost Mr. Ralph Satterfield. In the Marydale Fire Company, we lost Mr. Dave Snell. And in Dover, we lost Mr. Alan Moore. When I stand up and before I do the pledge tonight, and you can follow me with the pledge, I'd like to observe a moment of silence on behalf of them and their families. So if we all stand up, and when you hear me start on the pledge, we can all continue. Sarah, I'll come to you now for roll call and determination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Servan?
Present.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Goffrey?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have seven present, you do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, before you, you have an agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion. Denise?
So moved.
Agreed.
Mr. Peterman seconded. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Goffrey?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven is in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
I'll be coming right back to you, Sarah, now for the introduction and public hearing instructions.
Thank you. This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony on the applications before the planning commission. Everyone will have a chance to speak. All statements are to be made from the podium at the front of the room. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion in the record. The record will remain open for two business days following the hearing. For each application before the commission, the chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given fifteen minutes to present the application. Then those in favor of the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Then those opposed to the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the planning commission tonight. The commission will hold a business meeting on Thursday, February 13th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, at which time it will make a decision on the applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered, and a common vote of four members of the commission is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend to the business meeting, but no new testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on January 15th, 2025, in the Delaware State News. And the levy court will hear these applications on Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, at 7:00 PM, unless tabled by the planning commission or withdrawn. Prior to the levy court hearing, the levy court also meets in this room. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, sir. I would ask that if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, put it on vibrate or turn it off, disrupt us during our... The first one on the public hearing tonight is application number CS-25-02. Application title is Felton United Methodist Church, Inc. Owner/applicant is Felton United Methodist Church, Inc., 101 East Main Street, PO Box 247, Felton, Delaware. Engineer is Scott Engineering, Greg Scott, P.E., 22 old, Rudnick Lane, Dover, Delaware. Zoning district is AC, Agriculture Conservation. Comprehensive plan map designation is low-density residential. Relation to the growth zone is inside. Present use is agricultural. Proposed use is assembly and worship. Water is a well. Sewer is septic. Levy Court District is the fourth. Mr. Scott? School District is Lake Forest. Fire District is Felton Station 48. Area and location is 5.8562 plus or minus acres, on the east side of Canterbury Road, approximately 0.61 miles south of Andrews Lake Road. Is there someone here to represent this project? Mr. Scott, you can come up and could be either sworn or affirmed.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go right ahead. You can pull the mic up to your face too there, Mr. Scott. Thank you.
Last person who was here was a short person, so... Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to present the plan for the Felton Viola United Methodist Church. We think this is a great location for their church and will be well-served by the community and the people in the area that already attend there and others that will come in the future. I might say I was by Torbert Funeral Home earlier today where they had the funeral for, I guess, one of your members at the Magnolia, and it was quite a contingency of the firefighters' equipment that were there. My thoughts and prayers go out to him. We really don't have any objections to any of the comments that the county had. The only objection that the church has was the installation of sidewalk along the frontage road. We really don't see the need for this. This is in a very rural area. On both sides of the property is agricultural property. The zoning for those properties such that you're gonna see low-density development, if any, there in the future, and what little traffic that it would generate as far as pedestrian traffic, and as well as the church on the roadway would be little, if any. I drive that road quite a bit, and I never see anybody walking along it, but we just feel like putting sidewalk there at this point in time would be counterproductive to the church and not to their best financial interests of what they can spend their money on in order to develop the property. I know that the Kent Dover MPO was recommending it, but I really think at this point in time, developing sidewalk along that corridor is counterproductive. And as such, we put in a waiver to the Regional Planning Commission, asked that they waive that sidewalk. Beyond that, I really don't have any other questions or comments that I can say.
I see on your plan that you have lane into the facility, but when you come south on the Canterbury Road, Del Dot's not requiring a left turn into the facility?
No, the... We did trip generation on that, the church use, and the amount of traffic turning left into the site did not warrant left turn lanes.
Okay.
We still have to meet with Del Dot and verify and confirm and go over all our data with them, so, you know, that's something that has to be resolved. But based on the trip generations and Del Dot's criteria, no left turn lane was required.
I know that's a high accident area being in the Felton Fire Company, and I know we have a lot of accidents south of Andrews Lake, all the way down to Route 12, so...
What their primary use is on Sundays, and so the amount of traffic that you see from normal Monday through Friday traffic isn't there, so you don't have that much traffic that would be opposing the left turns in there to warrant that left turn lane.
Understood. I think Mr. Davis has a question?
I guess the only question I have is, we normally, particularly in subdivisions, we ask the developer, have they had a meeting with the neighborhood? I noticed there's a lot of people here tonight, so I don't know if they're for or against it. I'm really kinda curious if you ever had a meeting with the people that live within the immediate area to address any concerns they may or may not have. You have an opportunity to speak tonight, but I don't know whether you had done that or not.
Um, yeah, I don't have firsthand knowledge of that. I know the church had discussed with me and indicated they were gonna meet with the neighbors around there to let them know what they were proposing and even show them a copy of the proposed development plan, and perhaps somebody at the church could address that, but I believe they have been in touch with the surrounding neighbors, and there may be some here tonight that wanna speak for or against it.
Okay, well, we'll find out tonight how they feel about it, okay? Thank you.
Okay. I will compliment you on the secondary fire lane going around the back of the building. That's very, that's very handy and all, especially with having so many people in the building, so thank you for doing that.
And that serves a multiple purpose, not only fire lane for protection, but also gives the church access around the back, 'cause that's where their kitchen's gonna be, and they can have deliveries made there as well and drop things off, pick them up.
Mr. Peterman?
Mr. Scott, you said there's agriculture property on both sides of this, and that's why you wouldn't need a sidewalk, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you be willing to put a sidewalk in front of their establishment if there's a housing development built on either side of it?
Well, I think...
You don't have to have a sidewalk.
I think as the Kent Dover MPO had indicated on there that they had studies upcoming on this area, I think that without a study having been performed yet, they really don't have any conclusive plans on what they wanna do out there. So if we were to put a sidewalk in behind the right-of-way on the church's property, who's gonna use it? You know, you walk a short section, then you're back out on the roadway. And as I said, I rarely, in fact, I can't recall any time I've seen people walking on that roadway. But the church really feels like it would be to their best interest to not have to put out money for a sidewalk that's not gonna be utilized when they can use it for better things, more efficient things.
I'm not talking about the present, I'm talking about the future. If there's a housing development that's built on either side of the future, would you be willing to put the sidewalk in then?
Well, I would ask the church to address that, if they'd be willing to. I would say more than likely they would, but I don't wanna speak out of turn here.
I understand, thank you.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I think we're pretty good shape.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in favor of this project and would like to come to the mic and speak? In favor of this project, come to the mic. You'll be sworn in or affirmed. I think you might have to pull that down a little bit, Linda, I don't know.
Yeah, I think so.
You'll be sworn or affirmed.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Linda String, 2104 Midstate Road, Felton, Delaware.
Thank you, Ms. String. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
As far as meeting, that was a question. Meeting with the neighbors, we felt it would be better to send them a letter with a kind of a little introduction of who we are and that we're planning to build the church there, and that if they have questions, we gave three names and three phone numbers that they could call to ask any questions that they wanted. We did not receive any, but we are here, you know, wanting to answer their questions. Since we're speaking first, we won't be able to answer their questions, 'cause we don't know what they are. Our church decided many years ago, it seems like a long time ago now because of everything that's happened since then, that the church, as it was built back in the 1850s...
Yeah.
...when people walked to church or went by horseback or in a wagon, didn't have to have parking for the people to come, and now we do. It's on the second floor, and the elevator has died and can't be repaired, we can't be repaired because the pieces are no longer there. So a lot of us who are in the church now, we can't have worship upstairs because we have trouble with the stairs and there's no elevator. So between one thing... Oh, and we need more place for our missions. We do a lot of missions, including food giveaway and clothing. But we voted as a congregation to build a new church where we could have the parking lot and we could have accessibility for everyone. And we were grandfathered in with the bathrooms, now we could have really handicap accessible bathrooms, and many other advantages for our church family. And it's been a while. We've had the sign-up for, I think, 14 years, but we're finally ready to move forward, and we're hoping to be very good neighbors to our neighbors. And we'd love to answer any questions they have after this meeting if we can't answer them during the meeting.
Thank you very much. I'll see if any commissioners have anything for this lady? Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone to come to the mic and be sworn in or to speak for this project? Come on up to the mic if you wanna be... You can either be sworn or affirmed after you give your name and address.
My name's Debbie Cadwallader, C-A-D-W-A-L-L-A-D-E-R. My address is 105 Marion's Way, Felton, Delaware.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
A couple of things you were asking about the surrounding land. I do know on one side of the church, that actually encapsulates three of our... Well, the street's one boundary. There is a house to the right. The other two sides is 58 acres, sent by Sharon Webb and her family, and they're avid farmers. They have a produce stand right near us, so I kinda think they would not sell out for development, but we don't know. I do wanna just address, I think people have heard things about this parking lot becoming a park-and-ride or a park-and-share, and it is not. It's strictly gonna just be a parking lot for the use of the church. So I just wanna alleviate people were concerned about that.
I thank you.
And we do a lot of missions. As a matter of fact, Felton Firehouse and Red Cross recommend people to come to our church when they have a fire. We try to help them along with the clothing, household goods, and other items.
Does any commissioners have any questions for this young lady? Thanks you again, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Speak in favor of this project? Come to the mic, give us your name and address. Third and final call, anybody else would like to speak in favor of this project? Going over to the against side, is there anyone here that's against this project and would like to speak? Anyone here against this project and would like to speak? Anybody on the phone, Mark?
We have no members from the general public online at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Third and final call, is there anyone here that would like to speak against this project? If not, we'll be taking this project up next week. Thank you. Yeah, you can come up and ask... Don't be asking them, you're talking to us. Give us your name and address. Answer the questions.
My name's John Finn. I live next door, 8416 Canterbury Road. I don't, I'm not against the church.
Hold on, sir, hold on, you'll be sworn...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Finn, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My only concern is, I had to get a permit to put another driveway in for my one garage, and it's right close to their property line. I went through Del Dot, had to put pipe in the ditch, the whole works. My concern is, looking at the blueprint, they're gonna put that extra lane in to go into their church in front of my property. Now, I don't have a problem with that either, as long as we have the understanding, when they dig out my driveway and do what they have to do, that they replace it back to good order, and I don't want a big stop, uh, drop-off for my yard, which is quite higher because of the ditch. I don't want a big drop-off that my camper bottoms out when I try to go out, out onto the street. And my other concern is, looking at the blueprints, they wanna put trees right on the property line, the whole length between my house and the church, which do they have to be... Do they have to have a distance from their property line, or could they be right on the property line?
Sarah, I think you can answer that part. The driveway, I would recommend, Mrs. String, I said there a letter was sent out, if you had questions, or you can talk to Mr. Scott after the meeting today.
I just have, I have a letter from the church that was sent to me if I had any questions, but I figured they're not gonna be able to answer the driveway question.
Okay, okay. Sarah's gonna answer your about the trees.
And certainly the trees could be on the property line, they're, I mean, they're required for a buffer, but we would encourage to pull them back a bit so you don't run into conflicts with neighbors in the future.
My concern with the trees are, I mean, I have no problem with the trees, it's their property, but what I'm getting at is, I run a 45-foot trailer through that driveway, I don't wanna have to be hitting the trees going on my driveway, be, in a couple of years, all of a sudden the trees are hanging over, is what I'm getting at, okay? And the other thing I'm getting at is, leaving my property with the right-of-way that the state has, which they own the ditch, up to the telephone pole on our property, that if the trees are out to the end, I'm coming out of the driveway, or my wife, and we can't see to pull on the highway, because the trees are all the way out. If you look at the blueprint of the trees, there's a couple of blueprints I printed off the internet, they're right on the corner of the property line, and I think it's gonna be a safety issue.
I think it's perfectly reasonable to request the church pull the trees back a bit, as well as...
That's not the one, there's another, there's another print which shows the trees on the property line on your right.
Mark, do you have the other print with the trees?
There they are, there. They're round circles. See what I mean, they're right on the property line, and they go right out to the edge of the highway.
Yeah, it's on the front...
Yeah, right there.
I, I think it's perfectly reasonable to ask the property owner to pull them back a bit, to try to avoid future property maintenance concerns, will also ensure that at that corner they maintain the site triangle.
We can make that... So does that answer all your questions? And Mr. Scott in the rear back there?
Okay.
The engineer of the project, he can talk more about the driveway. Not here, but I would talk on him on 1-on-1 after, after we're done.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else here, third and final call, against this project? Yes, sir. Give us your name and address, and you can be either sworn or affirmed, and then go with your question.
My name's Buddy Spear. I live at 8407 Canterbury Road, which is Red Cross Highway.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, the only questions, I'm definitely not opposed to the church at all. I would say I'm for it, if I were given that question. My concern was the zoning for the property. Does the zoning have to be changed for the erection of the church facility? Has there been a request for a change in zoning?
Sarah could answer that more than us.
No, it, there has been no zoning change, none is required.
Okay. Even if the expansion of the church in the future would...
No, the church has a permitted use in the zoning district, so the district doesn't have to change.
That's all I was concerned, was the changing of zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comment. Mr. Goffrey?
This question is staff. Sarah, two things. So in regards to the trees along the highway and the gentleman that was speaking in terms of concern about his trailer, I'm just thinking in terms of the fire department and ladder trucks. If those trees were a hindrance to his trailer, they would also be a problem with the fire department, and we've got fire people up here, so I...
It doesn't seem to be with the way the building's laid out and how the auxiliary lane is in the back of the building. There's plenty of access to the building and all, which would be there, and I don't see anything, as far as the fire company, would be questionable about.
Okay, and then the other, the other question of staff was having to do with the, if, if Del Dot gets involved in that highway, in highway changes there for the turnoffs and all, are they required to restore conditions, the functionality of whatever it is that they had to dig up to do whatever it is that they do?
Yeah, absolutely.
They are required. So the concern about that issue being left in an untenable state would not really, should not really exist.
Absolutely, it should not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all, and we'll be taking this project up next week. Thank you for your comments. We'll now go into our second public hea... Excuse me, public hearing for the night and our fin... Excuse me, and then our final one. Application number CS-25-03. Application title is Top 100 LLC. Owner/applicant is Top 100 LLC, 1924 Bay Road, Milford, Delaware. Engineer is Marestone Consultants, Inc., care of Robert Nash, PLS, 33516 Crossing Avenue, Five Point Square, Lewis, Delaware. Zoning district is AC. Comprehensive plan map designation is low-density. Relation to the growth zone is outside. Present use is residential and agricultural. Proposed use is same with landscaping business. Levy Court District is the fourth, Mr. Scott. School District is Milford. Fire District is Carlisle, Station 42. Area and location is 20.645 acres plus or minus on the east side of South Bowers Road, approximately 554 feet south of Mosley Road, Brock and Bridge Road, east of Federica. Is there someone here to represent this project? Mr. Nash, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Good to be seen with everything that's going on.
Yeah, about it.
You'll be either sworn or affirmed by our attorney.
Mr. Nash, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Okay, well, looking at the, I'm not looking at the site plan, but when it's up there, we have no, no problems with any of the comments from, from the staff. The, I have been, I've gotten some, some comments from the staff, obviously, and I have been working to fix those comments to, to their satisfaction. As you can see, maybe...
If you have to show us or point, Bob, you can look down on that screen down to your right, and you can put your finger on it.
Right here is, that's a field, that's a field support building. This is going to be their corporate offices, and we have adequate parking for the corporate offices here, and we have parking here for the, the people that work for them. This is where their field operations are gonna be. These bins are for different kinds of mulch and things like that. So this area here is going to be, be stoned, and this is all gonna be stoned. Of course, we'll be paving the entrance. We have, we have not got approved from Del Dot yet, but since this is a low-use road, very low-use, we asked for a waiver from the sidewalk requirement, and hopefully that'll be approved. And so they're existing, they're building a greenhouse right here, and they have... have, uh, five or six other greenhouses that they would like to build at some point. This area here is gonna be designated for plantings, uh, for their use. Uh, they'll be planting trees and such out here, and I have, I have with me, uh, the owner of the property, and I'd like for him to speak a little bit about their, you know, the business they're, they intend to do out there. So if, if you don't mind, I'll introduce.
I do have one question. Sir, was you, was planning requiring one of the buildings to be taken down because it was in the wetlands? Was that one of the comments, or was I wrong? But I didn't know if you had seen that comment or not.
I might have missed that one, rather.
That's okay, we'll move on, and, uh, if, let me see if anybody here has any questions for you as a servant.
Okay, sure.
Anybody here have any questions? Mr. Garvery?
I'm not sure I'm asking the right person the right question, but, um, so, um, in terms of the, uh, comments having to do with wetlands, stormwater, and runoff, um, you would be in compliance with those recommendations?
Yes, in order, in order to get, acquire final approval, uh, we will have to have a letter from the Department of Transportation and Conservation District. Also, uh, when I talked to, uh, Chris Conley, he told me for this preliminary, I could show the edge of the woods as being the wetlands, and a 25-foot offset from that, because the rest of it's all prior converted, it's, you know, it's been farm fields, so it's no longer considered a regulated wetland. And, uh, so we have no problem with, with showing where the wetland is. We realize that we are in a flood zone, so we're gonna have to deal with those regulations as well, and again, we, we have no problems with that. And we have an area at the low end of the property designated for, um, stormwater area if it's necessary. We don't know what kind of, of dust management practices they'll require, but hopefully, not too much of a pond or something, or anything like that. There's many, many other ways to, to take care of the stormwater.
That's, that's fine, thank you. Um, the only other comment, which you're not under any requirements to do, but I throw it in there, though, I know wetlands is a hindrance to all of us when we're trying to build things. I happen to live in Little Creek, so I, I, it's the dry spot of a sponge most of the time, but, uh, but it is habitat for other critters and things.
Oh, yeah.
You have nice little wooded areas, and you're a landscaping business, so it's a perfect place to make an example of how you can preserve what little bit of, uh, areas that we have left, um, that for the critters that actually do like it wet a little bit. So, and, and in keeping with you being in compliance from a stormwater runoff in that port a bit, um, you also have the opportunity, I think, with those, that wooded area to, um, protect it a bit if you could.
We have no, there's no reason for us to disturb the woods. I mean, it's, uh, we know that it's mostly wet, the soils in there are kinda wet, and we intend to leave that as, you know, natural area.
Great, thank you very much.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say good to see you again, and, uh, I guess that woods of all the mosquitoes are hanging around, right?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah. Size of bluebirds and stuff.
I guess that your field support building is the one where they're keeping all their vehicles in, so they won't, so they won't be out in the open?
Yeah, the, I, well, I'll let, I'll let, uh-
Okay, well, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Nash? Yes, thank you, Bob.
Okay. Joel, you wanna come up and just cover it?
Uh, good afternoon, um, good evening. My name is Joel Sullivan, um, and I'm representing the Sullivan family-
We need your address, your address, sir, and then you can be sworn or affirmed.
24 Bayview Avenue, Federica, Delaware.
Mr. Sullivan, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I would like to just maybe submit, uh, something for the record. Can I do that now? Okay, cool. Um, I just wanted to take the time to just kind of like introduce ourselves, the business, um, what we're about, where we come from, um, you know, uh, so my name is Joel Sullivan, I'm the second generation, uh, part of the family with me is, is the Sullivan family, and, um, you know, what we're about, we've been in, in business now in Kent County for over 38 years, um, and so what brings us here? We have a, uh, we have a lot of restrictions right now where we're currently at. Um, a little bit about the business is that we've grown exponentially. Um, we've been growing, last year, we grew 34 percent, we've been growing 30 percent for the last 10 years. Uh, we have 198 full-time, uh, employees over across the state at four different locations. Uh, most of these locations in Selbyville, Millsboro through an acquisition, and Milford, we have been running the, the large part of our offices and admin in the basement, if you will. We currently work the construction and the admin above our retail garden center, which is a completely separate entity, but because of the business is continuing to grow, we've kind of outgrown our infrastructure, and it's become really a, a hindrance to our future development and growth. And so, um, you know, currently, right now, at the garden center, we are really restricted, we have no more parking spaces, uh, left, because we have the garden center employees and the landscape employees. We have every single office double-booked, um, our ceilings are above the garden center, and, and it's just like, it's so cramped. And, um, so as we continue to grow, um, this has been coming for a very long time, and we've, you know, put a lot of time and effort into what we want to do and what we want to accomplish. And so for us, we wanna be a top 100 company in the United States, and with that, we wanna lead by example. Um, and this is, we think, um, something that we could, you know, kind of be the role model for, for landscape companies and be, and show, you know, and, and everything we do, we're very intentional, and we want to invest into the property that's going to be a showcase for what we think for the next 20 years. And so to Bob's point about the office versus the, the support services, uh, our intent here is to have some administrative, uh, functions that support our branches. So the majority of our business will not be ran out of this location. Um, there's, there's over, there's 50 employees in Selbyville, 50 in Millsboro, 50 at a different location in Milford, that they're running all the maintenance out of. What we're specifically operating here is the administrative office side of things, and also, um, the construction, the landscape construction side of things. And with that, we need plant material and growing plant material, and so what is our intentions with this property? It's a vertical integration, um, we're trying to cut out the middle person and, and grow our own plant material. As we continue to grow, it's coming a bigger and bigger issue. Um, we, we have ran out of, it's a nightmare right now at the garden center, because the inventory, okay, who owns the mulch? Well, we just had a residential person come load up with the mulch, and now the landscape company has the mulch, and it's just a, it's a nightmare from a, from a bookkeeping side of things. And so it's, allow us to grow, to allow the garden center to grow, and for us to take kind of the next step as a company. Um, so the support services, uh, really, what, what does that mean? It's supporting the branches, so all of our branch locations kind of do the mowing and the mulching and all the maintenance services, but what they need are improvements in landscape construction. Think about design-build, so we have landscape designer, so he could be running from Wilmington, Delaware, to Selbyville. Well, Milford is, for us, is like right, it's a 45, 50-minute drive north and a 45, 50-minute drive south, so it's centrally located as our hub, and our branches are our spoke system like a wheel, and so this would allow us to ship and get large shipments of trees and grow our products. So we, we do a lot of, uh, landscape construction for home builders, and, and we have forecasts for the year, so we can bring in 100, 200, 300 trees in, and kind of grow them up for large-scale landscape development projects two, three years down the road, and really be able to, um, reduce our direct cost of our material. So this is more of a strategic, um, you know, kind of, uh, location for us to support our existing branches. Um, I would say from an administrative side of things, we're talking about seven to eight people, and from a, uh, a support services side of things, the landscape nursery and the installation, um, currently, that division is around 13 to 15 people, it fluctuates. And so we're talking, it's not a large number of people that will be here at this branch, um, it's just the support and be the backbone for all of our existing branches, uh, that are serving our clients today. Um, we don't anticipate this being a very large, um, it's the smallest portion, we are a heavily maintenance-driven business, and we take care of large projects, and, and some of them might be the Delaware State University or Valleys here in Dover, we take care of just larger commercial projects, and so this is the minority of our business, and it will stay the minority of our business because we like the reoccurring revenue model. Um, so that's a little bit about the branch itself. I know the one question was about the trucks. Uh, so right now, we, our, our fleet for those trucks total would be around five trucks is what we're kind of talking about, a very small kind of number as far as the installation crews. Our intent was, and I can kind of go through this, but this is like a, this is a design of a, of a clockwise kind of UPS, no backup motion, and so as the trucks pull in, they fuel up, they go right to the drive-thru where people load their trucks up with plant material, and then they circle around to the bends, they get the mulch onto the trucks, and then they circle into their positions, so that way, when they walk out of the buildings, they can go right into the trucks. Our intent was for the five trucks to be outside of the buildings, um, as we could run mechanics and other things within those buildings that, that could service the vehicles. Um, that being said, if there's, uh, concerns about that, or, uh, measures that we need to take, we will definitely, you know, take that in consideration and, and, and come to some type of solution.
I appreciate you addressing that, thank you very much, and thank you for your overview of your business. Let me ask the commissioners, anybody have any, Mr. Davis?
I just got a comment, make, uh, I like your business plan, your thinking ahead, that's, that's positive, but since I've been on the commission, I think you've been before us, I know two times I can remember, and everything we've asked you to do, you've already done it, and we thank you for that. Uh, you run a good business operation, so I wish you well on this application.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, it means a lot.
Any other questions, commissioners? Seeing none, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here would like to speak in favor of this project and come to the mic? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this project? Please come up to the mic if you wanna speak. Give us your name and address, and you can be sworn or affirmed.
Shining, good evening, my name's Charles Evans, I live at 1234 South Bowers Road, I'm the corner property next to this proposal.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm kinda like four against, I'm, I'm in the middle of it, so I don't really know how to address this, I've never done this before, so I'll just put it out there. My concerns are, number one, uh, the amount of traffic this is gonna cause on our little narrow road, okay? The large parking area that's gonna butt right up against my driveway. I don't have an issue with all that parking, but I would like to say that I would like to have a privacy fence to separate their property from my driveway of some sort, okay? The other issue I have is, this is gonna be a landscaping business with a lot of growing. Uh, I would hope that they're gonna dig a deep enough well to supply the water to this place that they're gonna need, so it doesn't, uh, challenge my shallow well right next to them. And the other issue I have is, I don't know anything about the business of growing, I have a brown thumb, but, uh, I'm concerned about chemicals with the wetland, whatever they use to keep weed control and so on. We have such a large wetland area buffering between our two properties, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of wildlife there, there every day, and I'm very concerned about chemicals getting into the groundwater, and-
Can you show us, uh, reach down there on that, on that right there beside you, can you point to where your property's at?
I'm, I'm that-
Right, right, right down there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am this big piece of pie here on the end. I have that big triangle pie.
Okay, that's what I wanted to see. Yeah, we're high-tech here, so.
I got, you know, my house is up front, I got the wetland behind me, and that one-acre pie in the back that's cleared. That also. And I notice greenhouses are going in that back area, so like I said, I'm concerned about any type of herbicides, uh, I don't want any of that leaching into the groundwater for, for our area, and for the wildlife in, in that wetland.
Understandably so. So you're looking for a possible fence, you say, to delineate your property?
You see where the long driveway is? It's gonna be at the other side of all the 48-spot parking lot, there's a couple trees there, I think it's showing that there looks like they're gonna be putting some kind of bushes or-
If you can-
Sir, you can point on the screen.
If you can point on there again, on that screen, like you're talking about, sir, see, Mr. Evans?
Okay.
Point on that screen where you're, where you're trying to point.
This is my existing driveway, right here.
Okay.
In that area. If they build this brush all the way up to the roadway right there, you can't see pulling it out of the driveway, and anybody that lives in that area knows South Bowers Road, for the lack of a better term, is the Milford Neck International Speedway, okay?
I thought that was a Thompsonville Speedway.
No disrespect, I, I, I know you guys do a great job in the area, but your trucks come down there-
Sir, sir, we're up here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You don't talk to them back there, we're talking to them. But if you'll notice on the plot here, it says that additional planting to fill bare areas, am I right, Sarah? So it's already gonna be addressed about identifying that on that side. It says it right on that sheet where you just pointed at.
Okay.
So, okay, we appreciate your comments, anything else?
That's it, sir, thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Garvery?
I just wanted to add that I, I believe in the compliance with the wetland regulations and stormwater runoff, um, that probably your concerns about, uh, agricultural runoff and pesticides and, and those sorts of things will probably be addressed in that study. The applicant seems to also wanna be setting themselves up as a role model for how things moving forward, um, so I would imagine, um, they're going to be looking carefully at, uh, the aquifers in terms of which they're, uh, drawing from, and, um, and probably doesn't wanna contaminate them any more than you want them contaminated. I'm also encouraged by the fact that the both of you are sharing, uh, an area that woodlands, you both share that habitat, they have the lion's share of it, you have a small portion of it at the top end, that wooded area, so it's an opportunity for the two of you to work together and, um, and come to some sort of agreement of how you both envision that being a habitat, since it's not gonna be used for this operation. So I think there's some synergy going on between the two of you, they are a landscaping business, so they should be able to put up a partition in some form or another, um, so I, I think the two of you guys just need to talk to one another.
I think Mr. Sullivan has demonstrated how, how he is and how he, he will be able to work with you, and if you ha-, you can talk with him on one-on-one besides what we're gonna do here, so. Anybody else here have any comments? Third and final call. Seeing none, we'll be taking this project up next week. Thank you all for coming. Going down to public comment, any more public comment? Any more commission comments? Seeing none? Any other business there, or anybody, Erica before the board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Garvery and Mr. Peterman, second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Garvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to adjourn. See you all next week, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.